Okay, it's ten o'clock today. It's Wednesday, March the 5th. The meeting in Longyear County Commission is called to order. I ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have fiduciary orders of March 5 and included in that is the confirmation of various estates, including the first accounting of the Arthur Scott Senior Estate. Minutes of January 29, February 5. Vouchers General County Fund, $47,062.59. Coast Severance, $28,162.45. Camp Muckway, $209.96. Mason Dixon Park, $3,065.12. Total of $79,089.12. I have budget revisions for the assessor's office to get his line items in order before the end of the year. There's also a revision of the $6,000 to the senior Montague alias that you approved last week. And I was supposed to have one from the prosecuting attorney's office acknowledging checks from RDVIC, which I haven't received yet, but you can approach it and get it done.
Move for approval.
Second, but I'm going to request discussion on one issue.
Okay.
Okay, if we can pass it with just separating everything and then the Scotch issue as a separate item for a minute, I just want to discuss it. If that's okay.
I'll adjust my amendment.
Okay, second, that, yeah.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
On the Scotch situation, again, it's more just confusion and concern and I just, I understand we are now approving what we had approved. Is that not correct? I mean, because of all the confusion going on with all the, I know they're in court today.
For some, if I may.
I appreciate it, yeah.
For some reason, the first accounting did not come through at when it was supposed to, and then the third accounting we got, which actually covered everything.
Okay.
We approved that some months prior, and then the first accounting came over. But my understanding is, is that everything was submitted to George Armistead, but for some reason, it wasn't submitted in a normal order.
That's, okay, that's fine. Just I wanted to clear, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that so if anyone wondered why we were, an explanation, so that's fine, that's all I wanted.
Okay, so you're all right with a motion to approve?
Yes, and second it, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Grant application for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Blacksville Miners Memorial. The project is $5,000. I have a resolution that needs to be read and also approve the signature for the president. Whereas $5,000 in Governor's Community Participation Grant Program funding was set aside by the West Virginia Legislature for the county of Montague to undertake for the Blacksville Number One Mine Memorial. And whereas the county of Montague has applied for funding through the West Virginia Development Office and whereas the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program requires that a local government unit enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Development Office to receive and administer grant funds, now therefore be it resolved by the county, by the commission of the county of Montague, West Virginia, that the president is hereby authorized to execute said agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the commission and that he be empowered to sign the contract and any agreement necessary to obtain these funds.
Move for approval of resolution. Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
Regarding the day report center grant that was approved last week, there was a revision that had to be made to, and it's actually increasing the request for funding to 330 to 450. I just, I had to have Bill sign that because it was due down in Charleston today, so he signed that last week for me so I could get it in the mail. I just need to have a motion to approve the president's signature on the, on the application and on the other documentation, the special conditions and the MOUs.
And on the revision.
And on the revision.
So move it.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mike, before you comment, I want to thank you for keeping us all informed, and I think the new, whatever you call the system of notification, appeared to be working properly. And I think that that got the word out.
Yes.
The easiest that we could ever get the word out, and just want to thank you for.
Thank you.
But it's pleased but not surprised because that's your normal routine. You do a good job.
Thank you. With me this morning is Mr. Jason Clodges. He has been hired to fill the open position of our systems administrator and assistant mapping and addressing coordinator. This is a position that we have under the 712911 budget that was previously held. He started last Monday with us. Jason was previously employed with us several, a few years ago, or in held this position for several years. So we're pleased with the upgrades that we have, that he's familiar with the system, and it could be a great thing for him.
From Morgantown?
Yes.
Related to the judge?
Yes.
How you related?
He's my father's cousin.
Okay, well, I went to school with him, that's why I'm curious. I knew all the clauses. I lived just up from their business there. I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Welcome.
I'm bored.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, just one question. The courts, the judges and the circuit clerk's office, they're on, and magistrate are on that automatic down system?
They've been turning in their information. We have to, we have the fifteenth due to deadline, but we have received some.
And I, yeah, I also want to thank, I think, in going public, I think all three of us were real pleased. The updates were really important because a lot of people had, in the past, had a lot of confusion of what was really going on, and we were able to say, here's exactly the position and the clarification when we were a county emergency, different than when the state has an emergency. I thought that was real clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognition, Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Department. This one? It's on now. Wasn't on.
This is supposed to be at 10:15, I'm not sure if there's any other.
So we won't wait?
Oh, okay, so let's, we'll move on.
Want to jump down to Colleen Harper?
Is she here?
Is she here?
Is she here? That was 10:45.
If not, can we jump down to unfinished business? Because Rob Steptoe's going to take longer than seven minutes. On the road repairs, I think as everyone knows, we approved and sent a letter off to the governor and legislative leaders, as well as our local representatives about a proposal to address the need, the dire need for some road repair and maintenance, and came up with an approach to that. I think there's some mixed feelings and I think there's some misunderstandings, but it is my understanding, you have to put it in perspective, and that perspective is, is that the agreement and the authorization for the state to take over the roads was done in 1933. There's no way that a 1933 road maintenance agreement is going to apply to 2014. Just not going to be done. I mean, I'm sure if you wanted to and dig out statistics, the population of Morgantown, the population of the county, the number of vehicles, WVU's population, I mean, there's such a significant difference, it would be between night and day. So, needs have changed. Sources of addressing that has changed. The state has made it very clear they don't have the funds, and they're looking for local support in being able to accomplish some of the needs of road maintenance and repairs. One of the things that I think that I'd like to see us open up for discussion and a potential motion is, is I'd like to see us follow up with our request, and I would like to ask consideration of setting aside $50,000 of county taxpayer money to, to address the need for road repairs and maintenance. The, the reason for that, and, and I guess I want to clarify something, this doesn't just apply to unincorporated areas. We have taxpayers that reside within the city of Morgantown, city of Westover, town of Star City, town of Granville and Blacksville. So, we're looking at assistance for the entire county to demonstrate that we're serious about our proposal and, and our priority is to move from who's going to pay for it to we need to get the job done. We spent five years trying to get the state to take a bridge that we had responsibility for that's located in the city limits of Morgantown, till we finally came around to where we agreed to pay $1 million to replace that bridge towards the total cost of $5 million. Now, we can, we can bicker back and forth all day about the roads, but that doesn't get the potholes repaired, that doesn't keep the streets at a degree that, of safety, because right now, some of these potholes pose a real danger to motors. There's some very deep potholes out there. So, I guess what I'm asking is consideration to formally recommend that we set aside at this point in time, $50,000 to start off a local maintenance repair fund pending approval of the state, that we can in fact do that because we need their authorization. We can't win and start doing road repairs without the state's approval.
I think it's an excellent idea. What we're facing here in Montague County, especially other parts of the area, but I think it's more acute here at, in Montague County, is we're, we're dealing with real public health and safety issues. All you have to do is drive on the, on the road a little bit. You can see every day, people are taking their life in their own hands, just driving to work and back. The proposal, the prior proposal was looking at different, at different funding sources, and I think this is a, this is a good, honest effort saying, we're, we're truly committed to finding local funding sources to help resolve the problem. We know that it has to be done. We have a public health and safety issue now. It brings up a couple of issues. One is, how does money go? What the priority, how the priorities are set, the emergencies and all that, that I think, I think it needs to go to create an immediacy. I think this $50,000 need to be created an immediacy with the Department of Highway to say, you know, here's $50,000 and these, these emergency things that we jointly identify as essential, essential repairs will, will be fixed immediately. It won't be delayed. And if I may, I've met, I've met with the Department of Highways before, a group of people down in Charleston as well. You know, I've been active on the TIF negotiating the intersection and working that. Instead of just sending another letter, I would suggest that, and I would volunteer, because I'm in the military, I don't know why I volunteer. I do that.
Because you know you're going to get drafted.
Yeah, we were going to draft anyway.
Well, maybe that's it, but, but I, I would, I would volunteer to, to take this directly to the DOH within the next week and lay down and work out all the, lay down a plan and work out all the details of how the money goes, how we're going to identify the projects, maybe even possibly work with the city if the city, the municipalities have a particular emergency area to help, to help them, and just knock out the details and maybe within a couple of weeks, we can actually get some result. I don't think we got any response to our prior letter, so I can ask them where the response on that is too, but, but that would be my suggestion.
I think it's, I write down, it's a really progressive idea, and I also see it as economic development. And for anyone who questions the concern, all they have to do is come off 79 from the sheets, heading to Star City to the other sheets, and I mean, as I keep saying that, I swear I saw some hobbits jumping in there, going down the middle earth, because, I mean, the holes there are just, I, I mean, it's a safety factor because you start swerving into the other lanes. And I think this is a great idea. The one question I have, and, because I know people are going to start, well, is this money for the DOH to be used in Mon County, or would this be money if approved by the state that we could get some people for particular areas and priorities? And that's what it, that's going to be a question, or is that what we're going to have to work out?
That's what we're going to work out.
Okay.
My, my idea would be, we're going to put up $50,000 as an emergency fund to take care of emergency issues.
Okay.
And one of the things I would want to talk to them about is the ability to get reimbursed or, or get funding in another fashion.
Right.
But that would all have to be worked out.
I, I, I think we, you know, I definitely want this, I want this motion approved. At the same time, I still do not want anyone to think that we are dropping, like you said, the other suggestion, which is monies that had been collected, excess up from the excess levy, that the Montague County residents have already paid and we're giving back to the state and use that funding so we could do it there, so, but I think this is a great approach to show that we're putting up money and we're very concerned and we're going to move forward.
Yeah, I think it's an addition to, in showing the sincerity of our prior request. Two of them are together.
Since you're going to be going down, do you want to make the motion since?
No, I'll move.
Well, you should make the motion.
You should make the motion.
Okay.
So you're going to send me down as your.
Yes. I move that we immediately put $50,000 in a fund to deal with emergency road repair.
Go ahead.
And, and also have Eldon Callan go to Charleston to personally voice our issues and concerns.
And I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
I want to clarify one thing.
Sure.
Is that we have no intention of Mon County tax dollars being spent on other counties.
Right.
We, I mean, we don't intend on the giving that our $50,000 to the state to spend somewhere else.
No.
In fact, we don't intend on giving our $50,000 to the state. We intend on sharing, partnership, in getting that road repair done. We've offered them a couple approaches, we're open negotiations.
Right.
And I'm sure when Eldon comes back from Charleston.
We'll have an earful.
We'll, we'll know exactly where the state stands.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Thank you.
I have to go to the mountain there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Tell them about it.
They're waiting for me. Mr. Callan is going to have to depart. I guess, I guess I could let the cat out of the bag, since you're going there for an announcement by a partnership with WVU, that the campus housing there on University Avenue, the new place, the one that stands out, the yellow, right now, the yellow building is going to have the first, nationally, the first sheets sit-down food service restaurant. There will be no gasoline service there. It would just be a restaurant, walk-in, and that's what they're going to make the announcement today, and Eldon's going to represent us to that, at the mountain there. So you heard it first, news flash. Recognition of Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Departments.
Want to make sure they're in here before we.
Is everyone in here from Brookhaven that? We have the chief out there, don't we?
Yes.
Is, is all your people here, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Why don't you come on in?
Yeah, come on in.
And, I think that would be great.
You want me to read this, or you want to read it, Don?
Oh.
Oh, Tom, go ahead, your turn.
Oh, okay, thanks. Thank you. Certificate of Honor. On the morning of January 30, 2014, the Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Department was called to a structural fire in Saberton. Josh White and Skylar McCormick, volunteer firemen with the Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Department, entered the lower floor of the home, finding the apparent location of the fire near the dryer, noting the fire was now in the walls. Both firefighters proceeded outside towards another window on the second floor, which would permit entry. Josh entered, stepped to the right and fell off a ledge toward the bottom of the stairs, where his leg became trapped from the debris that fell around him. Skylar McCormick heard the screams and proceeded to dislodge Josh three separate times, only to be stopped by flames which were beginning to envelop Josh. On the fourth try, Skylar was successful in freeing Josh from the rubble surrounding him, and they both exited the structure. The backdraft immediately destroyed the home. Josh sustained third-degree burns to his ear, hand and right side. Because of this selfless acts of heroism shown by Skylar McCormick, along with his leadership, skills and bravery, Josh's life was spared. He is expected to make a complete recovery. Therefore, we, the Montague County Commission, this day recognize Skylar McCormick as an outstanding member of the Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Department and the community in which he lives. His dedication to the volunteer fire department brotherhood is to be commended. We wish him much success in his lifetime endeavors, dated March 5, 2014. And if I could just say, a lot of times, a lot of heroism, we use the word hero loosely, and sometimes, I believe clearly, on a situation like this, this is a volunteer fireman who went in, did what we expect him to do, but he did this in lieu of the possibility of losing his life and saving the life of another friend, volunteer fireman, and so I'm honored and humbled by you coming before us. I, I just want to thank you very much. What you did, it represents the best and the brightest of volunteer fire departments and firemen all throughout this nation. Thank you.
The, the one comment that I'd like to make is that, you know, there's an initiative going on by the volunteer fire departments in terms of the increased demands being placed on volunteers, and that demand anymore is not little, with the training and equipment and, and sometimes very costly equipment, and that we're looking at ways that we can enhance that funding, just simply because we're talking about a basic health and life issue. We're talking about the equivalence of, of at times just as important as law enforcement in this county, and, and deals sometimes with the loss of life and, or the prevention of the loss of life. And, and I tell you, take a little personal notes, since I reside in Brookhaven, it makes me proud that the Brookhaven Volunteer Fire Department's being recognized, and as a resident of Brookhaven also makes me feel secure, that should something occur, that the services are there and very capable and honorable people to carry out those duties.
And did the chief want to say anything? I mean, I.
I want to give you the certificate.
Yes.
But I'd, I'd like for you to leave it until Ilman comes back so that he can sign it. Congratulations. Gary?
Josh, you want to?
I mean.
Yeah. I have both here today.
Oh, are they? Oh, okay. This, this is the fireman, this is Josh White.
This is Josh, this is Skylar. Can I make a statement?
Yeah, please, sure, please.
Try not to get too much, you know? My brother warned me, if I embarrass him, that there'll be repercussions. My name is Jerry White. I'm a court security officer from Montague County Sheriff's Department, proud father of Josh and the number one fan of our hero, Skylar McCormick, he truly is. On January 30, 2014, our family was not only privy to God's miracle hand and its power, but the courage and bravery of one young man. As we were at West Penn following the accident, I became aware of the details of Josh's rescue and Skylar's efforts, and I wanted to see for myself just exactly what happened. Josh was wearing a helmet camber that day, and when we got back home, my, me and my wife went down and saw firsthand of the dire situation that both these young men were in. Josh partially went through the stairwell, and he became trapped, and Skylar was unable to free him, but he never once left his side. In the book of John 15:13, it says, "Greater love hath no man that this, a man lays down his life for his friend." After reviewing the footage of Josh's helmet camber, I have no doubt, if Josh wouldn't have made it out, Skylar wouldn't have made it out either. They were in dire straits, yet Skylar would not leave Josh's side, but because of the miracle power of God and the courage and bravery of Skylar McCormick, we are able to stand here today. We thank the commission for this opportunity to recognize this young man for what he did because he truly is a hero. And we'd like to thank and recognize all the volunteers, firemen in this county, this state, this country, for it's a thankless act, it really is. Every time that alarm goes off, they go out, no questions asked, no, they're not going to get paid, but they have a desire to help people, and we're truly grateful for that. Skylar, our family thanks you and is indebted to you for the rest of our lives. Because of your courage and bravery, we've been given the greatest gift we could ever ask for, and that's the life of our son back, and for that, we will be truly grateful. Thank you.
Did you, yeah.
You want?
I realize you don't. I know you realize you don't want this recognition, but sometimes I think we need to recognize, you representing all the volunteer fire.
If you'll just come and stand over here, give me a good picture, and we'll try to get that to you. Can you get everybody in? That's, turn sideways.
We're going to teach them how to use.
All right.
One more.
One more.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Any problems with us keeping this to get Eldon to sign it, and then we'll get it to you, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Rob Steptoe, is he out there?
I seen him.
Thank you, Jimmy. You're all right, buddy.
You sometimes forget what they do. You just expect them to go out and do it, and you sometimes forget that, what they have to deal with.
Good morning.
Hey, Rob.
Morning.
Looks like we have about three different things to cover.
We do, and I, I'm going to be able to cover them with one document.
Oh, okay, great, great.
And fairly, fairly quickly.
That's even better.
I'll leave one for Eldon Callan.
Okay.
These are the final terms and conditions that we've been able to achieve through the process of the financing for the Justice Center today. And we, as you know, we had the pricing last week and showed the building commission and the county commission those results, made sure they were acceptable with the county commission and the building commission. We executed the bond purchase agreement and the other various documents, and we locked in that pricing and the interest rates. And so, just what I'm going to do here is just go through some of the, the key, the key markers for the transaction, and then talk about the GSA approval as well as the investment product. And I think maybe you'll need to make a motion and approve the selection of the investment product today, and then that'll be it, and we'll close next week.
Okay.
We issued $18 million, $18 million of which is going to be transferred to the construction fund. construction fund next Thursday morning after we sign the remainder of the documents on Wednesday, and we've arranged for that pre-closing here at the offices of the county commission. I believe for four o'clock on Wednesday. Tom Amon, the trustee, myself, Chairman Pappas with the building commission, and President Bartolo, along with the clerks, will be here with a seal, and we'll get all the documents signed. The bond credit rating was a strong one. We, it's a testament to the county, it's a strong financial condition and a bright future here. We were able to secure a AA3, which is high-grade investment rating level and on the bonds themselves, and the county would be rated even higher one notch at a AA2. And we've gone through the difference between those two ratings because of the state law that requires that the county have the ability to not appropriate funds, but we've never had that in this state as far as we can tell. And so, Moody's understands how we operate in West Virginia, and they're satisfied. The underwriter's discount is, that .0095 is $9.50 per $1,000 in bonds issued. That is the same level that we proposed in our proposal when the county commission engaged us. And interestingly, we were almost exactly on our fee of $171,665, that's $165, I believe, more than the fee we projected back in January. Annual debt service of approximately $1,283,000. That fluctuates about $1,000 to $5,000 each year, so it's not a lot of fluctuation, so it's still considered level debt service. So it would be between $1,281 and $1,286,000 every year for 20 years. Again, because of the strong financial condition of the county, bondholders and the underwriter are not requiring a debt service reserve fund, which is typically done, but in this case, the due diligence told us that it wasn't necessary. The interest rate is a great one. We projected back in January, before we went through the rating process with the county, that we would have an A rating, but you all got a double A rating. At the time of that A-rating projection, we thought you'd be in the range of a overall interest rate of about a 445, 446. You're actually almost an entire percentage better than that, lower, 90 basis points lower at a 360. So that's a homerun interest rate. Final maturity is February 1, 2034. It's a 20-year loan, and there are about four other things here I want to go through that will cover the other two items on the agenda. Redemption, again, because of the county's strong position, we were able to go into the market and negotiate the shortest call that we could, and we thought it might be a 10-year call, but we were able to deliver a seven-year call. So in seven years, the county will be able to pay off or refinance all or part of the transaction. And that call date and the ability to do that and the flexibility that it provides starts February 1, 2021. We also built in an extraordinary redemption for prepayment, and this is additional flexibility for the county. Let's say that the county, after budgeting for a fiscal year, has some carryover in the budget, and they want to pay down part of the bond issue. They can do that at any time, as long as they provide 30 days' written notice to the trustee and to the building commission, and that they do so in minimum denominations of $100,000. So that's a nice piece of flexibility that you all have at your disposal as well. As you'll see on this term sheet, the investment of bond proceeds is what you all need to make a decision on today, and assuming the commission approves. This is a product that is offered by the trustee on the transaction, West Banko. It is fully insured by FDIC for the entire amount that will be deposited into the construction fund, which is $18 million. There are no fees involved, so there's no cost there, and it has liquidity at all times. And right now, the current rate of return on $18 million is 1/4 of 1% at 25 basis points, which would be about $45,000. What we're doing is, we're having the trustee do a calculation to find out exactly how much earnings there will be on that money as it's drawn down. We've given them the tentative drawdown schedule for the project so that they can make those calculations, and as soon as those calculations are available, we'll pass them along to you. The property transfer, GSA had to approve of the transfer from the county commission to the building commission for the purposes of financing the renovations and improvements. So we reached out to General Services Administration, the agency within the federal government that essentially handles all federal buildings and the inventory, managing them and also disposing of them and selling them. And we hadn't heard anything for a while, so Tom Amon, your bond counsel, and myself, we decided to give them a little bit of information about where we are and the consequences and things that we're anticipating here with the pricing and the closing of a major transaction. I know they had some ice days down in Atlanta where their offices are located, so they finally surfaced, and we were able to assure them of two things. Number one, is this going to be a tax-exempt transaction? And we said yes. And number two, will the building be transferred from the county commission to the building commission for nominal consideration? In other words, ceremonial consideration, $10. We assured them that that is the case, and within minutes, we received two email, written electronic emails confirming that they have approved of the transfer. So we're all set on property transfer. The last thing I would say is that in the lease agreement, under the terms of the lease agreement, the county commission will be making all payments to the trustee for the benefit of bondholders until the debt's retired. The lease agreement runs the length of the loan period, and after the loan is paid off, ownership reverts back to the county commission. And lastly, I would say that the major decision-making authority, well, all decision-making authority for operations and maintenance will be retained by the county commission, and so that's where we are. We were thrilled to be able to work with the county commission and the building commission and staff in achieving this financing, and we're grateful for the opportunity.
Well, Rob, we appreciate your efforts, too. I think that you provided us a very professional, kept us very well-informed service. From us, in terms of the services you provided, I think we're all very pleased and appreciate it.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do is break them in three different motions, and then after each motion, if there was any discussion on each one, that way we can resolve it. Like, the first motion would be approval of the ICS Investment Project Fund for Lease Revenue Bond Series 2014A.
You're making a motion. Okay, I'll second, all in favor, signify I. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. I move that we, transfer, we accept the transfer from the U.S. government of former Stagger's Building by the county commission to the Mon County Building Commission.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And the third is approval of the bond pricing as read before us for the Lease Revenue Bond Series 2014A, Justice Center project.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify I. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And just for the record also, we had discussed this at the work session, but I wanted on the record that Cruz and Associates, not only was your cost only a couple thousand dollars, if even that off, but the actual debt service was, I think, almost right on of what you had proposed. In fact, I even believe it was less than what we finally came up with. And with such a short period of time, because we were in a time crunch, I want to go on the record thanking you and your staff because you came through with what you had said you would do, and not only that, and also, you know, you made a very good clarification for that lease agreement, and I again want to read, "During the lease period, the county commission will retain all decision-making authority over the operation and maintenance of the Justice property." And that's what we wanted. Thank you.
The only other comment, I'd like to make sure we're on the same wavelength here in terms of what we're looking at in terms of progress here. We have requested the documents from the contractor, the certifications that were needed. Have we done that, Diane?
There's going to be a pre-bid conference, not a pre-bid, pre-construction conference March 27, I believe, and then we'll do all the documents at that time.
Okay. And then we'll be ready to start doing the work.
That's right. Funds will be wired Thursday morning, March 13, next Thursday, and that'll be five days, five calendar days before the bid expiration, so we stayed right on schedule to the day with a lot of work from you all and staff and the other members of the working group.
Well, the 27th will conclude all the paperwork, and the money's in the bank, and so now the contractor can be ready to go to work.
That's correct.
I think we should start in April.
I think we should start as soon as possible. In fact, I think we should make sure that the contractor is aware that once we sign the papers on the 27th, they can start work.
They need to mobilize all their equipment.
Yeah, they can take whatever preparation they need to be able to start working the 1st of April.
And that's right on line with what Masero is projecting in their drawdown schedule, their tentative drawdown schedule.
Okay, good.
Very good. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Colleen Horsberger.
Here you go.
Yeah, she knows what it is.
That's fine.
Just have a seat if you'd like, sure. If my memory serves you correct, you're here today for us to make a decision on the participating in the wellness initiative.
Cities.
Yes. And that, just refresh our memories on the cost.
The cost of the application is $1,200, and we were proposing that it be divided three ways between the city, WBU, and county.
Okay, so it will require $400 funding from the county.
But there was also 1/3 of, if we get, when they come here, we pay the costs of those two individuals.
Right.
So it would be $400 plus 1/3 the cost of...
Of travel for people who vote on...
Yeah. Yeah, I so move that we allot that funding.
I'll second it. All in favor, signify I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And just for your information, I did call Colleen, there is a program, first weekend in June, that the state's running, and I was planning to attend, and I've offered to see if they were interested, and I also have someone from Voc Rehab, Healthy Environments, I guess. So I think, you know, it may be something, and there's grants available, so if you don't attend, I'll bring back the information to give to you.
Sure, yeah, I started looking at it.
Okay, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
New business, reorganization of park advisory boards. We had discussed the makeup of the individual park advisory boards, and what we have is, I think, Renata, you have that, you and Jambi? A proposal to combine all of the boards into one advisory board for all three parks. And I think the adjusted procedures reflects that, that there will be one board. It will consist of, essentially consists of all current members, and through attrition, we will reduce the number of members on that board. Is, am I correct?
Yes.
So we have a copy here, Ben, if you want this, we can get you a copy of it, and Janice, you'll need one for the record. But I just want to let you know that these procedures are dynamic and that they can be changed and altered at any time by the county commission. They're administrative procedures. There's no requirement for ordinances like for these procedures. So administratively, we can adjust. There seemed to be a question in our last meeting about guidelines and those kinds of things, so we wanted to get something reduced to writing so that everybody's on the same wavelength and the same channel and understands what the procedures are. We're trying to get something that's uniform so that all the county parks are run the same. We're making a very deliberate effort to fully develop our county parks so that they provide more availability of programs and services to the people that reside in this county. And also, we're looking at trying to make some physical improvements to some of our county parks. You know, we really came to the conclusion that in some ways, our parks were underutilized. We have some very nice parks, you know, Mason-Dixon has a historical aspect to it, and Camp Muffley actually being the home of the 4-H group has served a function with that group, but it certainly has more capabilities than that. There's a swimming pool there that we need to look at getting repaired and revamped and updated. There's also, there was a new soccer league forming that I think was going to get with Jambi in terms of utilizing some fields at Mason-Dixon and Camp Muffley. So we're really putting out a concerted effort. We've hired new park superintendents for at least two of those parks, and Jambi's met with them, so our communications has been improved and enhanced with those park superintendents. Their authority and power has been increased. We are giving them the ability to run the individual parks that they're the superintendent of. The advisory board is just that. What it name implies is that they advise the park superintendent. Their communication should be with the park superintendent, and the park superintendent is the accountable person to the county commission. Any comments?
Yeah. What we are doing is moving forward with an idea that we had started six months, almost 12 months ago, which is streamlining our parks, moving them forward, getting them equal representation and also funding, and I think that was really key. At the same time, this would be cutting down on the administrative duplication and allowing flexibility. And the reason why I use the word around allowing flexibility, meaning that even though one of the individuals may be a superintendent of one of the parks, if and when they needed, if there was another park that needed someone to help, we were able to be able to do flexibles so that they would all be a part of one system. And I think that is the key that we're trying to do, very similar to the city of Morgantown where they have a white, you know, White Park and a Marilla Park. We don't have specific advisory boards for each park, so therefore, it's under one system, moving forward. At the same time, having, you know, the county, the visitors bureau being able to promote all the parks at the same, the same way. And I really think that this is what the people really have been requesting, and for us to move forward down the road when we're also looking at this greater participation of funding for the needs for, as we said, sports recreation and, God, I forgot the last word. I wrote, and wellness, okay, and wellness. So with that, I move that we approve the new Mon County Parks and Recreational Advisory Board and stand in... Board and standard operating procedures.
I'll second it, all in favor, signify I'm
One second.
Also, in that motion, you need to dissolve
Yes. I was gonna, I was doing one, then I would, okay, let's, once that was approved
Yeah, let's back up to
No, well, I'd rather do this first, and
Oh, okay.
And then dissolve, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Since that motion is now carried, I will move to dissolve the three separate park advisory boards.
And I'll second it. Motion's made in second, all in favor, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We also need to get out a notification as soon as possible to current members of the individual boards.
And if we could put in the letter to those boards that we are encouraging, I want to be real clear, encouraging them to be a part of this new board, so they can then be making decisions and representing, if they're still right now with the Mason-Dixon, they would have that. And one of the concerns we had had in the past was whether true or not, people from one board said, well, one park was getting more funding than someone else. This way, all will be treated equally and equitably, making the recommendations, then coming before us. Thank you.
Okay.
So their terms will carry over from today on those who have the one-year term.
Right.
Exactly.
They would be the first to drop off.
That's right, that's right. I think we're gonna go from, what do we have now, nine members on, when you put together?
No, I think we probably got, well, we got a total of fifteen.
Right.
For the three park boards?
Four forty, yes.
And there's one vacancy.
And we're gonna reduce it to seven, one board.
By attrition, when, yeah.
Through attrition.
Went through attrition.
Okay. Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
I'm trying to think. Really, I have, have no report. Again, I think what you did, I'm a little shocked, because what you did with that fifty thousand dollars for economic development and putting him for a road fund, I think it's a tremendous idea, and I want to just congratulate you, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. I'd like to make one comment. Diane and I had the opportunity to have lunch at the Blaney House with E. Gordon Gee. Hopefully, they'll get the final approval for his selection as the returning president of West Virginia University, and I think I made the comment that the search committee could save them some time and effort and just reappoint him. And I don't know if it was a mouse in the room or what, but that's what they did. And I'd just like to say that based upon, and Diane, you can comment on this, based upon our discussions with him at that time, I was impressed. He's extremely knowledgeable, and I think he has a sincere interest and concern, certainly for West Virginia University and the students, but I think he also has an appropriate concern for the community, and he voiced that. The interaction between the university and the community is very important to him, as it is very important to this community to have a good relationship with West Virginia University. So, I just wanted to comment that I know, I'm for one, am very pleased that, and hopefully, they'll put the icing on the cake and appoint him officially the new president of West Virginia University. Diane, you have any comments about your impressions?
He was very enthusiastic about being here. Like you said, community-oriented, he was just like a sponge, wanting to soak in everything we were telling him, and I think he took it to heart. And pleased with the decision.
Okay, reports from elected officials. Do they have any?
Nothing to report.
Nothing? Ron, anything from Granville?
No, sir, nothing.
You know what, let me retract that.
Okay.
But one thing.
One thing, I'm following that line. I was gonna wait until next week, but I just gotta give some thanks. For one, since we've done with our board review and everything like that, to my staff, not just in the real estate side and the appraisal unit, but the whole, the office just in general for the past year, of everything they've been able to accomplish, deadlines being met. And I know this past two months, my appraisal staff and the real estate group over here have just worked nonstop to get a lot of that stuff done. And to Jeff Welsh again, I mean, Jeff has helped us with this transition over to the appraisal office a great deal, along with the phones and the computers done. Setting up a webinar yesterday for us to move forward with time clock plus in our office, so he's been helpful. But as a whole, between that and the Commission, and with Diane and all the staff here, it's just been, I gotta applaud you all for the last couple of months, being patient with us through this board bill, and greatly appreciate it. I don't say it that often, and it's a good time to do that.
Well, in response to that, since few of us here could go back prior to your arrival, and prior appeal hearings, and the number of appeal hearings, and plus, even the appeal hearings we had this year were different. Appeared to be more of a lack of understanding of the procedures than it was a direct disagreement with the values. And I think I can speak for the Commission and everybody involved, Mark, that we certainly appreciate your leadership in that assessor's office. And I know that you and your staff have been out into community, talking to people, and firsthand learning what their concerns are, and I think that went a long ways in terms of developing a relationship with the community about property appraisals and assessments. And I think it was reflected in the number. We had very low number of appeals. Nowhere, doesn't even compare to what we had in the past. You can't even make a comparison, because they're so far apart, but we thank you. Janby, anything?
No, sir, not at this time.
Is that anything? Diane, anything? Janet? Ben, anything from the media? Comments from the public? Well, being no comments from the public.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion for adjournment. Second it, all in favor, signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.